I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 4th, 2023 special meeting of Monticello District 82. I want to take just a moment to look out into the audience. I know those watching on the livestream probably can't see the audience, but we have quite a number of our employees here this evening and we welcome you. We're glad you're here. We hope you'll come more often than once a year and show us your colors and talk to us and have a chance to meet you. I also want to announce that we're aware that there's a number of activities going on this evening, some concerts and sporting events, and that people may be coming and going from the audience during the meeting and that's okay with us. So if you have an obligation, you're going to watch something, go ahead and go. And then at this point in time, we'd like to invite everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance. And the flags are over here.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, engagement, pure God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our regular agenda this evening, we would like to take a moment to recognize and appreciate one of our own. So there's a lady named Pam Seib who was a long-term employee and a food service specialist at the high school who unfortunately passed away while she was still employed here. And we just wanted to take a moment, I'm so glad that all of you are here also as her colleagues and fellow employees, to share with us the moment to recognize her service to the district and to express our appreciation to her family for her service and for all of the good work she's done for the kids of this district. The board has decided to forward to her son a certificate of appreciation, signed by all of the administrators and board members as a show of our appreciation. And at this point, I think Superintendent Olson would like to say a few words.
I think Pam would want us to recognize her for the smile that she had on her face for kids and the people that she got to serve every day. She had a great sense of humor. She was a person who was always smiling and always sharing a positive story or a positive interaction whoever came through the line, no matter what she was going through in her own personal life. And so as a school district, we pay tribute to a great person and a wonderful server of people.
So thank you, all of you, for showing your support for your colleagues. We don't often lose one of our own while they're still employed by the district. Sometimes people retire and, you know, have health concerns, but this was a really special situation for our district. And we just wanted all of you to know that we were very aware of this and wanted to make sure that we properly showed our respect and our appreciation for her work for us. So thank you very much. So moving on to our approval of the agenda. The agenda, for those of you that are new with us this evening, is a tentative agenda until we make it the permanent agenda. So if you check the agenda on a Friday or a Saturday, you may notice that things are added before a meeting on Monday. So I like to explain that to people because we often get questions or emails about why things were added to the agenda. So that's what we're doing here. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Sall moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as listed by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All of those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes six zero. We do not have any citizens' comments for this evening. Moving on to fiscal stability, we approve our previous minutes and our personnel matters as a consent agenda. While it looks very quick when we move through some of these, we have all had these documents for quite a while. We have had the opportunity to ask any questions about any of the information on the personnel matters or the approval of minutes and have had those questions answered to our satisfaction. And so at this point, this is consent agenda and I'll entertain a motion.
Sall moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes and the personnel matters. Motion made by Melissa Curtis and seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to collaborative connections, we have a resolution for gifts and Superintendent Olson is going to discuss the resolution for the donations.
As you've seen in recent meetings, we are very blessed to work in a community that supports all of our buildings and all of our programs. Tonight is no exception. Both of the donations coming forward here today are within a career mindset, pathway mindset. And Cassia Parkview Care Center has brought forth $10,000 in CNA lab equipment to help pay for the Monticello High School CNA course instructor and provide materials for CNA lab. So very happy to be starting a new class and bolster a pathway that we've had at Wright Technical Center, but we're really trying to gear it and build our own at our school as well. And then the Wrench Way, bringing $500 to support the Monticello High School Industrial Tech Program. Both donors are, we want to show our appreciation to you. These are going directly into programming for our students and couldn't be more proud of the partnerships that we have going with these two and many, many more across the community.
I will echo what Superintendent Olson has said, that we are incredibly blessed with the number of donations that we receive. Sometimes, I think we had a meeting recently that it was in excess of $25,000 that was donated by groups in the community. And that's just astounding to me that we can attract that type of donations and we're incredibly grateful because these are things that we couldn't do without them. We just simply don't have the funding for it. So we do have a resolution for the acceptance of gifts.
Therefore, it be resolved by the Monticello School Number 82 to gratefully accept the following donations. Cassia Parkview Care Center, $10,000 in CNA lab equipment to help pay for Monticello High School CNA course instructor and provide materials for CNA lab. Wrench Way for the donation of $500 to help support the Monticello High School Industrial Tech Program.
All those in favor of accepting the resolution for these gifts, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Resolution to accept the gifts passes six zero. Moving on to teaching and learning, tonight is a special evening that we are required, according to statute, to provide a truth and taxation hearing once a year. We are also going to hear from Clifton Larson and Alan, our representative from the company who performed an audit of our financial situation. And those are also things that are required by statute that happen annually. So I'm going to welcome Director Business Services to the podium, Tina Burkholder, who's going to give us the truth and taxation hearing. Welcome, Tina. Thank you.
Truth and taxation hearing, and this is for the 2023 payable 24 levy. So for us, this revenue comes in next year for school year 24, 25, or fiscal year 25. So with the truth and taxation law, it was adopted in 1988 and amended in 2029. Some of the main requirements in that law, counties must send property tax statements to people between November 11th and 24. All taxing jurisdictions, cities, counties, school district must have a truth and taxation hearing. And then we must adopt the final payable levy by December 28th. The state law requires that we present information on our current year budget, also that we talk about big changes in the levy, the increases and decreases, the reasons why those things are happening and allow for public comment. So with school districts, we're a little bit different from cities and counties. Our school year or fiscal year goes July 1 through June 30th. So our budget is six months after the fact where we do budget revisions in January. Where cities and counties, they're doing their budget and doing their taxes all at the same time. Where they're on a calendar year basis, so that's going from January 1 to December 30th. So the change in tax levy doesn't mean it's a change in budget. Tax levies for us are based on many formulas and/or voter-approved referendum. Some increases in levy are revenue neutral, where we'll see a decrease by state aid and we have a couple of those in our levy this year. A lot of it, again, is based on formulas and the increase in taxes doesn't always mean an increase in our budget. So again, because our budget is six months after the fact of the truth and taxation hearing, I'm only going to talk about the budget for the 23, 24 school year. So within school districts, we have many different funds that we keep track of. We're separate buckets, separate checkbooks. So for Monticello Schools, we have the general fund, which includes our special ed cooperative. We have the food service fund. We have our community service fund, which also includes our hockey fund, debt service fund, internal service fund, and our OPEB or other post-employment trust fund. Here's just a summary of our audited fund balances for each of those funds and then the adopted budget that we had for revenues and expenses for the 23, 24 school year and what the projected fund balance would be at the end of this year with that audited balance. So we are required to have that similar information on a budget form in the paper by November 30th. So that was in our paper last week and it's also posted on our website under the finance section. It's not advancing. There we go. So here is a pie chart of our revenue budget for all the funds. You can see the general fund is our largest operating fund, about 84% of all revenue coming in, or 68 million. On the expense side, again, the general fund is our largest fund at 67 million out of the whole pie. Just diving deeper into the general fund, not including the special ed cooperative activity of 11.7 million, you can see the largest source of revenue coming in for the general fund is state aid at 76%. Property tax revenue coming in is, only makes up 18% of our pie. On the expense side for the general fund, salaries and benefits are the majority of our pie at 80%. So that's basically budget information. Board members, any questions on budget information that was presented? Otherwise, I'll just move on, keep going.
I have a question on the debt services fund.
Yep.
So just a little bit more explanation. So in 2024 payable, there is a increase of 33% over the previous year. However, in '23, there was a 26% decrease. Can you go over the fluctuations?
Yep, I'll hit that, I'll hit that in a future slide. So for the proposed levy for payable 2024, again, talking about the determination of the levy, comparison of the levies and major reasons for the change, impact on taxpayers, and then talk about some refund programs. So there are a couple of reasons why, or that could impact a tax bill for an individual. You take a look at the change in valuation of the individual property. You take a look at the total valuation change of all the property in the district, other increases or decreases based on formulas or voter-approved referendums that may happen, enrollment, et cetera. And then the evaluations that are calculated for payable 2024 is actually based on what was assessed as of January 2nd, 2023. So the state is heavily involved in the process. They set the formulas, they set the tax policy, they set the maximums, which we can levy up to outside of voter-approved referendum. And they authorize the school boards to go out for voter-approved referendums. Also in the process, another way to look at it, county assessor is the first step in taking a look at the market value of each property. Legislature, again, setting the formula and the tax capacity for the levy limits for school districts. The county auditor is calculating all that based on the tax capacity and parcels of property within the school district. Minnesota Department Ed is making all those calculations and putting that in a report to the school districts. Us as a board, we just have a small piece where we're adopting the proposed levy in September and then the final levy in December. The last step, the county auditor finalizing all that in the final levy. Taking a look at the events in a different way, September 8th is when MDE is by law required to give out our first look at all the calculations. It's a 40-page report. September 18th is when we adopted our proposed levy to the max. In November, again, the property tax statements are sent out to the property owners. December 4th, tonight, is our truth and taxation hearing and then we'll certify the levy at the next board meeting. Now diving into our levy for payable 2024. Overall, our levy is increasing 10% or 1.3 million from the last year. The next slide has the categories from the general fund levy. That one's increasing 491,000 or 4.76%. And I'll go through the major increases and decreases in a couple of slides. The community service fund, basically pretty much the same as last year, just a $500 change. And the debt service fund increasing 832,000 or 33.5%. Going into the large changes, our voter-approved referendum is increasing 77,000. This can be used for general operating expenses. This is a combination of state aid and local tax levies. So the reason for this increase is we had some inflation increase with our voter-approved referendum and an increase in student enrollment. For our local optional revenue, that increased 151,000. This can also be used for general fund operating expenses. Again, a state aid, local levy combination. For this payable coming up, we had more actually come in levy and less in state aid. So that's that revenue-neutral shift I was talking about due to property valuation increases. So it is equalized where more is coming in in levy versus state aid. But it had some increases overall due to increases in student enrollment. Our operating capital increased 83,000. This can only be used for capital-related expenses. Again, a combination of it comes to us through state aid and levy. This one, again, had more coming in in levy and less in state aid due to property valuation increases, but it had some increase in student enrollment estimate as well. Our career technical levy increased 87,000, 86,000. This can only be used for approved career and technical programming. This is through state aid and local levy, but for us, it's mostly levy. And going into this year, we had an increase in a program at our high school through the career tech program. Other post-employment benefits increased 222,000. This can only be used for other post-employment benefit costs. The reason for this increase is that we had more retirees under this eligible benefit. Our long-term facility maintenance levy in the general fund decreased 212,000. This can only be used for projects under our 10-year plan. This is a combination of state aid and levy. Last year, less was needed for our debt service long-term facility maintenance as we had a one-year return of bond proceeds back to the property tax levy. So higher allocation went back to the debt service long-term facility maintenance program. So the long-term facility maintenance debt service had still a decrease overall because also it looks at our principal and interest bond payments over the year. So it takes into that as well. But a big decrease or increase, sorry, in our debt service, what Casey was asking about, is under the reduction of excess fund balance and this is used to cover delinquency and tax collection. So school districts have to levy 105% of what the principal and interest bond payments are overall. The state then looks at our fund balance overall. If it gets too high, then it take, reduces our levy to, back to the taxpayers. So in 2020, 21, bond proceeds actually go to a construction account. And so we had our Pinewood HVAC project that we had happening at the time. And we had about 900,000 that we didn't spend. And so from the construction project, we transferred that back to the debt service fund. So it's been hanging out in our fund balance and just waiting for the state to look at the fund balance and then it'll do a decrease in a future levy, which is now, or last year. And now it's going back to a normal level. So last year, unfortunately, we saw a big decrease in the levy, but then we went back up to where we're normally at. So we, you know, if we could, we would like to have that swing not happen where we can have that reduction happen over a period of time. But that's what we are forced to deal with, unfortunately. So you also see that when Mary presents our audit presentation. You'll see the debt service fund balance. Well, you'll see a couple of years where we're more at the 600, 700,000 fund balance range and it kind of went up where we returned those bond proceeds back and just waited for the state to take it in a future levy where the fund balance will now go back to a more acceptable level. Here we have, what's the breakdown of voter-approved referendum levy versus local levy? So pretty much similar, just small changes based on inflation or formulas that are happening within the levy. So next, we'll take a look at the impact on taxpayers. We have Ellers, our financial advisors, that give us some hypotheticals on what could be happening within the district. So they're using the, an average of 23.4% as an increase in property values over a four-year period. And so we'll look at what happens, you know, if there wasn't a change in valuation, people would actually see a decrease. And so we have a couple of charts to show if there was no change in valuation for 150,000, 250,000, 350,000, and 450,000, what the tax bill would look like. But for, unfortunately, people are seeing increases in their valuation and so they will see small increases based on that. So not everybody's going to see a 10%. Just because our levy is going up 10% doesn't mean that your individual tax bill will go up 10%. So hypothetically, you know, what it could look like for a $150,000 home, $250,000 home, 350, 450, what that change might look like in the district. And then I did add a couple of slides just to kind of drive that message a little more. So within our levy, you know, we have a pie and depending on how big your valuation is, would determine the piece of your pie. So if you have a higher valuation increase, your increase might be higher than somebody who's not seeing that increase. So this is just a very simple example where if there were two properties in a school district, both valued at 100,000 and the total levy was $500, they would each pay 250 in school taxes. Where same simple scenario, if the gray house on top increased, their property value increased by 10%, and the red house on the bottom increased by 25%, the red house is going to see an increase in that tax portion of that $500. So again, depending on what's going on with your individual valuation has a determination of what you could pay as your individual tax bill. But then also what's happening overall in the district. Fortunately, we have the Excel Power Plant in our tax base. So this is just a couple of parcels in their property that I kind of look at. And so they have a big part of the pie, but their valuation went down for 2023. So they're, they'll probably see a decrease and that might push more increase to the other individual properties. So just something to be aware of, of what's going on in our, within our district. And last section is that we have a couple of tax refund programs out there. So depending on your situation, reaching out to your tax professional on how to complete these. But the first one is the Homestead Credit Refund, where it's available to all Homestead property, both residential and agricultural. property, both residential and agricultural. And it's mainly for the house, garage, and one acre only. The refund is on a sliding scale and can be based on property taxes and income. The second one is the Special Property Tax Refund, again, for homestead property, both residential and agricultural, the house, garage, and one acre only, where it has to have a gross tax increase of at least 12% or $100 from the previous year. And the last one is the Senior Citizen Property Tax Deferral, where you have to be at least 65 years of age or older and a household income of 60,000 or less, and that a portion is just deferred, like eventually that would have to be paid off. So those are the refund programs. A lot of information on the tax levy and some hypotheticals. But now I'll just take questions from either board or if there were public comment questions.
Any questions from any other board members? We can open it up to the audience. Is there any questions from the audience? State your name when you get to the podium.
Hi, my name is Dustin from Monticello here. It's good to see a lot of people here. I wish this was kind of a little bit more prevalent when you guys have your normal board meetings, but just wanted to make a comment in the sense that, yeah, we go through the dollar amounts and whatever, and we got to understand that, you know, there's a lot of things going on right now. I mentioned this through the levies too, but, or the referendums, but nevertheless, this is people's real money, right? So as people realize, they're seeing a lot of costs, inflation, everything that's gone on with, you know, all the increased costs, you know, this comes down to their bottom line. And, you know, there's some avenues for the district to take to kind of compromise in that avenue and understand that people's wallets are very important to them, costs are just out of control. And, you know, ultimately, this gets down to, you know, making sure that you show restraint, right? You show that you have some ability to know that, yeah, we both are struggling, and, you know, this is supposed to be the second year of our budget cuts. And, you know, saw first year in a little bit of the cuts, but this second year has been kind of light, and it looks, you know, like maybe there's something that the district can kind of show to in favor of this to be able to, you know, show a little bit offset so that it's not so much burden on the homeowners, because in this case, it's on the homeowners.
Dustin, I'm going to interrupt you for just a minute. Do you have a question for Tina Burkholder?
I don't, but this is open for general comments. That's what the statute says. So it's not necessarily questions, it's for comments. So that's, I'm just stating a comment. Obviously, just wanted to, like I said, make my point here that just definitely think of, you know, people in the community that have to pay these property taxes and seeing everything else come up, that, you know, maybe a 5% would be more in line with showing a little bit of restraint and, you know, coming up with some ideas of, again, to cut costs for other things like I've brought into you guys in the past. And so just really think about them. It is important to show that. And, you know, it's going to get tougher. I think things aren't just going to get, you know, filled in on the back end, and somebody's got to pay for it. And I know these property owners are definitely seeing it, especially with these value prices going beyond what anybody really should have seen with this, but this is the way the system goes. So open that, definitely take consideration for it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Tina Burkholder, our Director of Business Services?
So with this chart, I want to make, I want the numbers to match what's in this chart to what's reported to the state. So for us internally, what does our general fund look like, you know, outside special ed co-op to make us more comparable to other districts around us? Yep, it's deposited in our general fund. Yep, through our special ed department. But a lot of it goes towards benefits. And, but right now, knowing that budget cuts are, could be coming on the horizon, that using what I can to offset some of that decrease happening.
Any additional questions? Please identify yourself when you come to the podium.
My name is Jeff Young. I'm a 66-year-old resident of Monticello Township. Very proud to be here tonight, and I just have a couple of questions and maybe some comments. But when I received their proposed tax statement for 2024, I went over to the county assessor and asked, what's the reasoning behind this? And I had a very good conversation with him, and he told me that it's the school. Not exactly sure why he said that, but he said, you need to talk to the school board. So that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. But it does seem like there's retaliation for the failure of the referendums in the past. We've been farmers in Monticello Township for three generations, still do the same thing, and we're concerned what's going to happen in the future for my daughter. But can you give us an idea of why the assessor is saying this is what's going on?
I think I'm going to ask Tina to, because she's familiar with the tax statements, to answer your question.
I'm not sure why they're pointing it back to us, because the assessor does the valuations.
They do the valuation of the properties, but when I asked them what's the main reason for the increase, he was telling me, sorry, I want to share this. He was telling me that the 10.01% is basically on the shoulders of the school district. So a little clarification tonight, can you tell us what's going on? Mr. Olson, I think you're the man for the job.
Yeah, if you want to, we can just pull up the slide that shows the exact amount of money that's generated. And I think, you know, how Ms. Burkholder already answered it. I think while they're saying it's the school, we know what, you know, formula is used to generate that income. And so we can tell you exactly the portion that we have, and that was what this presentation is all about. By saying it's just the school, I think that person would be better off showing the formula to show how the income from that levy is generated by the school. Instead of just saying the school, because then it puts it into a kind of an us versus them type of scenario, and you walk away feeling, oh, my goodness, what are they doing that's wrong? And we're only doing what's, you know, what the state allows us to do through those mechanisms of funding.
Just to comment on that, Mr. Olson, that is why I'm here tonight. What is going on? Why are things not going correctly?
What's not going correctly, Jeff? This is the first meeting you've been in two years.
Okay. Is that a question for me now?
We don't have any. Tina, who creates the formula that put 10.1%?
Mr. Hagley, if we go by your rules, you're going to have to give me a request to have a meeting with me, because that's what you have to do with you. You're still underneath the impression that we work for you. We do not.
Yeah, Jeff, I mean, I think how I answered the question, I wouldn't be able to say it any different. We could look at the formula, we could look at your property value, we could help do that, we could sit with the county assessor. Tina and I would be more than willing to come and sit with the assessor to do that. We could bring our formula, we could sit with the assessor, and, you know, come to hopefully a feeling where you can walk away understanding it exactly. Because as far as what is the school doing, we're not doing anything besides exactly what you just saw. We're paying our salaries, our benefits, we're trying to uphold the programming for kids and be a successful school. That's what we're trying to do.
This is not retaliation for failed referendums, Mr. Olson?
Absolutely not. I would not know how to do that, number one. But number two is, yeah, I just, yeah, it would come up in our audit, it would, I'd be embarrassed to be part of a school district that would do that, but I wouldn't even know how to do that. So.
Only way to do that would be to influence the property assessments, and we have no part of that process at all.
At the end of the day, our costs are rising over and over and over, and we can't just sell a product or increase a number of a product that we're selling to generate more revenue. All we have is a tax base. So now we have these driving up costs every single year through all, everything the school runs and operates, and we don't have another way of getting the money. And then we're forced to follow these regulations and processes to get to that point or to those actual values. We're not just arbitrarily out of thin air saying, hey, 10% sounds like a nice raw number.
Do you understand my concerns when I go to the assessor, and that's what they tell me? I look at this, and it's alarming.
That's why I'd love to sit with you guys, because it.
And part of it, too, is if you look at your tax, that you'll see the different line items. So you can see the exact amount of your tax total that is the school of that small percentage on there. So it is, like Tina said, it is the 10% that does get approved, is 10% of that line item value. It's not 10% of the overall tax value on there.
Well, there is good news. Compared to Maple Lake, they're at 25%. So that's a good thing. But we're concerned about what's going on, so I appreciate your time.
I also wanted to just share with you, too, that the percent of our operating budget that comes from property taxes, Tina, correct me if I'm incorrect here, but it's 18%.
Yes.
So 85% of our funding comes from the state. I also want to share really briefly, since we're talking about property taxes, the Minnesota School Board Association had a delegate assembly this weekend, and we had a special speaker on Friday night, Blois Olson. You might have, some of you might have heard of him. He's a longtime speaker for WCCO. He shared with us, we had a discussion about property taxes. The house that he purchased 12 years ago went from $2,700 a year on his property taxes to $10,000 a year, quadrupled in four years, or, I'm sorry, in 12 years. So the problem of escalating property values and the taxation for the schools is much larger than just our district. And as we said, we have no influence over the assessment of properties and what the assessor.
I understand that, ma'am. But when you talk to assessors, they always say they're three years behind. So when things start going the other way, we're going to be three years behind the eight ball at the same time, so it's going to be very difficult. So, Mr. Hagley, did you have any questions for me?
I did not. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else?
I just want to reiterate what Tina said, too, on the Homestead Exclusion Act. So that is a sliding scale. So as your property value goes up, that amount that is excluded goes down, so your net property taxes go up off of that. We don't have any control over that. We have just that one line item, the entire bill. If you do see a large increase in your taxes, look to the previous years and see what that Homestead exclusion amount was, and see what the impact of that is.
And again, you know, the debt service fund, like I mentioned, went up that 832,000. The 3.3 million is mainly where our debt service levy is on a regular year. So unfortunately, we have, you know, that big decrease and now that big increase that's making things skewed. When I looked back 16 years, again, it's a 16-year average, our levy has only increased about 2.5% over those 16 years. So I think we're trying to control what we can control outside of voter-approved referendums and, but a lot of it's formulas and enrollment estimates. So, you know, we do what we can.
You know, a couple of questions. When we encounter members of the community and they ask us about this decision to increase the property taxes by 10% for school purposes, is that an accurate statement for us to make? Or going back to what you were talking about, it sounded like the value of the property determines the amount of the increase. So not everybody's going to get a 10% increase, correct?
Correct. So it's when somebody calls and asks a question, that's the first thing I ask, what's your property value doing? And I can't control that. That has to go back to the assessor. And unfortunately, I think it's in May when you can appeal what your value is assessed at. And so that's already, you know, five months behind us. So when you do see your valuations, proposed valuations that come from the county, you only have a certain amount of time in May to appeal that and go to the county. Once that happens, again, it's what's your valuation doing, what's, all the valuations happening, again, Excel decreasing, that's a little concerning, that's going to shift some of that more tax levy to other properties. That's making their pie smaller, others larger in that division. So it's a lot of things happening at once.
Can you tell us what the maximum has been over that 16-year period you referenced?
I can't, but I feel like the 10% is the highest. I know we saw a 9% increase around 2019 when we approved the HVAC project at Pinewood. I mean, the first increase was 50% in '07 or '08 when the first voter-approved referendum happened, but since then, just some ups and downs.
If we had to look at this from, maybe looking at the next couple, two or three years, as a taxpayer, I think we'd be concerned if we were going to face 10% year over year. What could we start to think about? The percentages might be the next couple of years, or where do we hope they go? If we're willing to go to the max that we've had for 16 years this year, how far down could we push them in the future?
Good question. Again, it's a 40-page report of formulas that, you know, what's our enrollment doing? Are we building houses? Because that would actually decrease, you know, we're increasing the tax base if we're building more houses. So I'd have to maybe ask Ellers a little help on that to answer that question.
Same with any new projected businesses coming to town as well.
I think it's a challenge to go to 10%. It's a pretty large number for families to bear, and we want to be fiscally responsible on this side of the table to make sure we're spending dollars in a way that respects that type of an increase of taxes, especially with the concern that we don't know what next year's going to bring economically or from a tax standpoint. If we, if we went below 10%, Tina, how does that impact the budget?
It's depending on how much you're reducing, because then we would have to start preparing for reductions going into the 24, 25 school year. I mean, we can't really decrease community ed or debt service. Those are a lot of formulas that are set. We have to spend what's coming in accordingly for those funds. It's only those general operating levies, like the local optional revenue that you can under-levy, and based on whatever you under-levy, that's what we'll have to reduce in expenses.
These are very challenging situations, because we don't operate like a typical business where we can affect our purchase of supplies or the product that we produce or that sort of thing. We're locked into a lot of really strict sets of rules and regulations with where the money is and what we can use for certain things. We can't just take money out of one bucket and put it in the other to make something look better or more advantageous. Any additional questions for Ms. Burkholder? We're on the live stream and recording it, so it's really hard to capture those comments.
So I'm Lisa from Monticello, and personally, I'm a single-family income home. I've had to really tighten my budget this last year, and it's getting tough. What have you guys done to look at your budget to see where you can tighten it? And I know I'm not the only one. I have friends and neighbors who are in the same situation as me. So I'd like to hear what the school's done.
Yep, well, we've had, I know, many years of reductions. We didn't reduce going into this year just because we had a lot of, a big change in our compensatory fund that came in, so that just delayed future budget reductions. So we've had many years. I don't think we have a one-page summary of what we've done in the last five, seven years, but I know we've done a lot. And I think the teachers feel it, the all-staff feel it, custodians, paras, admin staff, there's been reductions across many areas at different times.
Yeah, we had a very, to bring up our nature-based program, we had a very successful and very popular nature-based program that we had to substantially cut and didn't want to. You know, that was just one example of a very popular program that was meeting the needs of families and children and teachers. And that was very painful for us to look at that program that was so unique in the state and have to slash it as much as we did. I think it's still very successful for what it's doing at the current time, but that wasn't. I think it's still very successful for what it's doing at the current time, but that wasn't the direction we wanted to go with that by any stretch of the imagination.
And our budget is constantly reviewed. It's not something we just do once a year. It's a non-stop and there's a whole committee that meets multiple times a month reviewing our budget and seeing what we can do. But also our administration's gotten really creative on applying for grants and getting monies in different places so that way we can operate as a district like we need to to provide the support staff that we also need, that our children need. So it's not something that's hastily done by any means. It's constantly reviewed.
We have a 6% to 8% fund balance policy. And so anytime that our fund balance gets close to those numbers or in between those numbers, we have to reduce in which, just in the five years that I've been in this position, I believe that we've reduced three out of those five years. And I think it was around three and a half million that we have reduced during a very short amount of time. And we've felt it. And when we had the opportunity to not reduce this year, I think those are, those are successes for us because we're dealing with, you know, kids too, just like you at home. You're working through with your family and we're basically the same thing. We're trying to put the best program we can together for, for our kids and for our people. So we hear you. It's a, it's a challenge to be able to do what you're doing leading your home. And we have the same challenge here that we're trying to do. And we have reduced, just like a normal household checking account, we have reduced most of the years. And I've been here 19 years and I think we're probably 16 out of 19 that we've reduced. So it's a, it's a challenge, but we hear you.
And to add on to that too, about 80% of our cost for the general fund is salary wages and employee benefits. So it's kind of a catch-22 situation. If you're trying to reduce the budget, then you run into the situation of, do you really want to reduce teachers? I don't think anyone really wants smaller class sizes, or larger class sizes, I'm sorry, larger class sizes. So it's trying to balance that out as well on there. So it's, it's, it's tough to do. It's a challenge on there, but we are looking at many different avenues of what we can do to make that work, so.
And to add to what Casey said, those are not static from year to year. They march up as well, just like food costs and property values. And I mean, everything keeps going up. So the, the amount of increase, just to keep everything the same from year to year is an invisible cost as we march across the inflationary spectrum and as we move up and we look at all of the salaries and benefits that you folks expect and deserve. It's a tough, tough situation to see those numbers year over year going up and the numbers going down, the revenue going down.
Budget is actually, and we discuss the budget every meeting. So if you, if you have opportunity to watch every meeting and not, not be able to still watch, you can see the exact details that we go through the budget every single meeting. There's discussion about budget and where we're at and how we're proceeding and if we're ahead of budget, behind budget. And so it's, it's something that, it's constantly on discussion. The budget committee constantly talks about it. Policy committee talks about it. Every school board meeting, we have conversations about it.
Are we ready to move on to the audit? Anyone else?
I think there's one in the back who has a question.
Sir? Go ahead. Please come to the podium so that we capture it for the live stream and the recording.
Yeah, I'll be pretty brief, but, so my name's James. I've had kids that have gone through the schools here. And it's been great, great, it's a great school district. But, let's open this. How much time do I have? Just like a minute? But, so school district side, 15% increase last year. This year, school district, 13% increase. You know what I'm talking about. Appreciated your comments. I'm not a good public speaker. I wouldn't normally come up here. But, I mean, 15%, 13%? I mean, we all know our houses' prices are increasing. That's, that's obvious. I mean, but I'm assuming most people here, their taxes have probably increased more than 10%, right? Everybody's, I mean, everybody's nodding. Sorry, I'm a terrible, terrible public speaker. But the gentleman that was here that kind of stormed off, I know what he's getting at. I mean, he might not have done it the right way, but, I mean, what if next year is like 10%, 15%? I mean, it's, it's not sustainable. You have to change something and you have to make cuts. I mean, that's, I mean, nobody, I don't want to see anybody cut. I mean, I love Monticello, I love this, this district. We've lived here 16 years, but, I mean, this can't go on. I mean, you just have to make cuts. And I mean, I don't want it to be people, so I don't know if it's programs or buildings or what it has to be. But you have to make cuts. I mean, have any of you ever owned a business? You know what I'm talking about? This isn't sustainable. I mean, not for a second. Let's, let's be honest, okay? Mani, great school district, great in sports, great in academics. My kid is a valedictorian. But this can't go on. It's not sustainable. You gotta change something. You gotta make cuts, shut down things. Sorry, I don't want to see that happen. I mean, I go to ball games. I mean, I'm, I get involved in stuff. But you got to. Sorry. Thanks.
We're going to move on to the report of the 2022, 20-
Yes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Casey.
Oh, he's leaving. I guess one thing I wanted to reiterate is like, we have contracts out here as well that we have to honor. So if there's actual contracts that are signed and running, we have to honor those as well. So I mean, when we go through all these contract negotiations, all those costs that increase have to come from somewhere. So that's the other hurdle that we run into.
We can't run a school district the way you would run a private business. It isn't a private business. We don't have the freedom to make the types of decisions you would make in a private business. We're bound by a lot of regulations, a lot of statutes that say where we're going to spend our money and how. So we're an independent school district, sort of, but not really. So.
Question. I guess in, in response to that, it's, it's hard to sit here and say that we can't cut, if that's what you're saying, because we just cut a bunch of middle school sport programs. It affected a lot of us families that have a lot of kids in this district. We all love Monticello, care about that stuff. So we do have the ability to find a way to make this work and not, hopefully not cut teachers and increase class sizes. But where I struggle with this is that the 10.01% is a formula and, and we haven't debated where to end up. We're just okay with landing at 10.01%, which if that's the right number, then so be it. But it's tough to hear citizens talk about how they're struggling to make ends meet or they're frustrated with percentages and not take some responsibility to find a way to get the 10% down to some number that makes more sense, if it's possible, or we convince them that it's not possible. But I think we have to come back next year and find a way to get well underneath the 10% so we're not maxing our 16-year high over and over again.
Yep, so that's the final comment I'd make that, you know, our next board meeting is next Monday. And so there's not a lot of time to figure out, are we under levying anything or approving the 10%? So, I'm not sure.
Okay, we're going to move on to the report of our audit. Mary Reader is our guest this evening from Clifton Larson Allen who performed, I believe it was this summer or this fall, the audit of our, I can't remember when it was exactly.
Probably the whole time.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. We'll throw out some more numbers as if you hadn't had enough tonight already. Seems to be the case each year. But definitely open dialogue. I think all of you have received the draft financial statements. We'll wait until tonight and then we'll finalize that. Everything in this PowerPoint ties back to the financial statement. PowerPoint's just a little bit easier as we go. You can see the graphs kind of where the district has been and where you're at right now. Again, this is for the prior year, June 30th, 2023. So this first one is your general fund. We do include the Special Education Cooperative there that we document. It just ties back to the financial statements. We're required to include that in the general fund. So at top, you can see the total revenues and total expenses. Down at the bottom here, I do have the budget to actual. So when you look at the actual revenues, 63.1 million, budgeted for about 62.6 million, came in at a positive 497,000. Expenditures at 63.5 million, budgeted for 62.2 million. So overspend by about 1.2 million there. Overall, net change in fund balance, a loss of about 388,000 this year, budgeted for a gain of about 353. So when you go up on the graph up above, you can see that unassigned fund balance at 4.2 million, so down a little bit from last year. When you calculate that out, your unassigned fund balance really is what's left over to pay normal operations. When you look at that, your fund balance is about 8% of your total expenditures. Your fund balance policy right now is to maintain a 6% to 8% fund balance in that category. So you're right on the edge of meeting your requirements there within the 68%. If you keep going down, you can see non-spendable is your prepaid items, things like that. Restricted fund balances, these are all restricted by outside sources saying you can only spend it on specific activities there. So it wouldn't be able to pay for just normal operations there. Next slide we'll go to is your food service fund. Remember that in 21, 22, all meals were provided through federal sources. Then in 23, you went back down to the paid, reduced and free categories there. So when you look at the revenues, 2.9 million did come in under compared to last year. When you compare that to budget, it did increase by about 217,000 there. Expenditures, 3.1 million, over budget about 600,000. Pretty common for my school districts to go over budget, just food cost obviously increased this year with that. So then overall, your net change in fund balance, you had a loss of about 200,000. Food service fund, you really gained some ground, 21, 22, with the way that it was funded. And now you'll just continue to spend down some of that fund balance there. Okay. Next is your community service fund. Here, revenues about 4.8 million, budgeted for about 4.5. Difference of positive 270,000 there. Expenditures of 5 million, over budget by about 694,000. You actually came in at a loss of 264,000 when you budgeted for a gain of about 159,000. So two of those, we'll look at a little bit, is two of your categories actually did spend and overspent there. One had fund balance, one will end up with a negative fund balance, but we'll talk about that on a couple of slides. Otherwise, each of these restricted fund balance, as Tina had mentioned, really has to stay within the community service program. You can only spend it for community education. Page five, debt service fund. As mentioned several times, you have to levy 105% of your principal and interest. As Tina had mentioned, if you look in columns 21, you did transfer out of the capital projects fund and into your debt service fund, 942,000. That now takes into account, so when the MDE sees your restricted fund balance up from 2020 of 778,000 to 1.8 million, they're going to come in and reduce your levy for debt service, spend down some of that fund balance and then make it up, back up to the 105% that you're required to by state statute. Capital projects funds were done in 2021. So overall, your general fund, unassigned and non-spendable fund balance is kind of in a graph chart here. You can see pretty consistent between 22 and 23. Each year, costs are increasing as well, so you'll need a little bit more in your unassigned fund balance to cover your 6% to 8% cost as well. Next one is your restricted, committed and assigned here. So a high in 2021 of 4 million, spending that down to about 3.2 million here in 2023. Next one, community service fund balance. Here you can see 2022 up at 700,000 and then in 23, back down to 444,000 there, pretty comparable with 2019 to 2021. Food service fund balance here, 21 to 22, feds really increased the reimbursement rate of those meals, served a few more meals than normal just because all students were eligible as well. And then in 23, went back down to the feed system, so spent down some of that fund balance in 23. Debt service fund balance, here's where we talked about in 2020 and then 21 with that transfer made. So good news is everybody's paying their taxes. Otherwise, you would see that decrease, but that's why you levy 105% in case there are some delinquents there as well. So here's where we talk about the community service fund. You can see early childhood and family education spent down a little bit of their fund balance, 12,000, remaining fund balance of 22,000 there. School readiness is the one I talked about that now has a negative, about 89,000. I know Tina had mentioned that you're monitoring that. Just continue to ensure that the revenues coming in are eligible or able to pay for those expenditures. And then adult basic education spent down as well, but really when you look at it, you still have a positive 267,000 fund balance there. So no concerns with that one. So overall, again, pie chart somewhat similar to Tina had already shown, state aid coming in at 54%, federal at 6%. If you were to look at this last year, federal would actually be 10% just due to some of the changes in funding. Local property taxes at about 17% and then your other local and county at 23%, which would have shifted as well. So then we use the bar, bar chart here to kind of show the fluctuation. So that other local and county increased. Your food service charges for services went back in there because you were paying for the meals. State aid increased a little bit. You'll actually, when we get there, you'll see your ADMs actually decreased, but it increased due to the change in funding. So a little bit increase in the state aid. And then federal dropped from the food service. You received about 3.1 last year in federal dollars for food service. This year you were down to 1.4. You see ESF, Education Stabilization Fund, so your COVID dollars. Last year you spent about 1.9 million, this one, this year about 500,000. So as you go, those COVID dollars will roll off. You'll get back down to more of your normal operations, which I believe would be about 2020, about 3.4 million there. which I believe would be about 2020, about 3.4 million there. So, then where do those revenues get spent? Here, you can see, biggest piece of that is going to be your regular instruction and then your special education instruction at 33% and 24%. Pupil support services at 11%. But then, when you look at the next page, kind of gives you the bar chart to see how each of those categories did year over year. Special education increased from last year, about 700,000 there. Decrease in regular instruction, but you have an increase in pupil support as well there. Capital outlay will fluctuate in any given year, just depending on what programs you have decided to take, to complete in the current year. Anything building-related and things like that, items that you need to spend. So, then we get into the funding. So, your resident average daily membership and then your weighted average daily membership. So, your high school students, you get 1.2. Everyone else is just a one-for-one funding. So, when you look at here, overall, ADMs did decrease. So, resident ADMs here, you can see decreased from 2022. Still higher than what it was in '21, lower than 2020. So, when you go to the next slide here, just gives you some numbers that you can see. So, your resident weighted average daily membership, about 46, 68. Last year was 46, 82. So, the resident students going elsewhere actually increased. Last year, it was 767 students, this year was 780. So, you actually lost more students. Non-resident students coming in, so your open enrollees coming in, did decrease last year, so negative in both sides, 594 down to 571. So, overall, when you look at 2022, your bottom served was 4,500. This year is 4,459. And of course, this is a huge factor in the funding that comes in to the school and what revenues are received is based on those students. So, really, a decrease is going to lead to some of that decrease in revenues as well. So, overall, we'd just like to do a quick comparison. Here's a chart. The light blue and the yellow are prior years, just not, current year won't be up to date yet. The light blue is school districts of similar size, so over 4,000 in average daily membership, and then your state average. This is just your district and school administration and support services for the cost. You can see the dark blue is then the Monticello district. Here, well under, similar size in the state. And then, what does that look like for total instruction? And you can see here, you're pretty close to the state average, just a little under districts of similar size here. So, really putting money back into the question. So, that's my brief overview. Shouldn't be a surprise, Tina and her team does a very nice job. Monthly financials, we don't come in and adjust the books at all. We just come in and audit, and most of the time, they are spot on. So, questions?
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. So, it's December 4th. We have to make this decision, as we talked about here, a week or so. Is there any way we could get this report sooner? Your audit, because it's fiscal year end, June 23?
There's a lot of moving parts, and we do do it as quick as we can.
So, I didn't hear no.
Be hard pressed.
Can we pick a date for next year that's sooner? Because we got 150 pages.
We're not their only client, so we gotta push somebody out of August or whenever. I don't think we could get it done in July.
That's fine, that's okay.
We can see.
Do what we can.
We've got 150-page report and 40-page PowerPoints and 27-page PowerPoints just a few days before your meetings. So, it's reading through everything and deciphering and working backwards on everything.
Because I, I mean, there's many layers that they go through to review. So, it's Mary, and then I don't know how many people above you are reading it and reviewing it, so.
Okay.
But we definitely can probably get it to the board sooner, if that's what you mean.
Yes, yes. All right.
I have a question, just to maybe, a little takeaway, you know, as we sit here tonight on a, obviously, a couple tough concepts and challenging discussions. Because, you know, those of us who either have been here or are just coming, when you see financials and you see the state of districts, it just makes it very challenging conversations. And so, while I definitely understand and hear both sides of feelings, especially when I go back to that last conversation, I start listening to the audit and I start listening to things like overall decline in enrollment, overall decline in open enrollment. Our audit is showing us that we're being fiscally responsible. We are just on the threshold of that 6% to 8% budget policy. And then all of a sudden, we have the discussion of how do we reduce the smaller piece of the pie when it comes to our local tax levy? And we already know that just maintaining that 6% to 8% with the costs and expenditures, it's just like every home. It's challenging enough to do that. And now, all to reduce another piece of the pie means that instead of $3.5 million worth of cuts in two out of three years, all of a sudden, you're going further. And that's what, it's hard to lead. People who only want the best for kids. And we, as a board, I know that's what we want. But we also are faced with all those other pieces of moving parts. And it just becomes really hard and heavy tonight. And I just, it's a, thank you for the audit. And I know that, while I hope to always find that magic pot of money, I can remember as a principal going to former superintendents and asking, you know, for different requests. And I don't think we've been able to crack that code, not only in our community, but many communities across the state and nation. It's hard, school finance is hard. It's hard to be a district that is able to support their funds in a way that makes everybody think that you're doing enough, whether it be a board member, whether it be a community member, whether it be a staff member. But goodness gracious, I hope all of us, we're going to keep trying. But it is good, I guess, on the heels to see that audit, that we are doing things in a fiscally responsible way, but we have had a lot of different pieces of the pie that are challenging.
So, the audit is an action item to approve. For the most part, I hope you saw that it was close to what the end-of-year report that I gave in November. One change in a GASB rule, we had to recognize our technology, Nutanix server in one year. So, it was about 212,000 that we had to move back into expenses versus a prepaid. So, that was really the only change from my report to the final report. But again, it's an action item, and once you approve it, the draft will be removed and we'll get it updated on our website.
Is there any further discussion at board? This is an action item?
I move to approve the 2022-2023 audit as presented.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Audit passes six and zero. Thank you very much. Mary, for coming, please come again. Moving on to innovation and leadership, we have a polling place resolution this evening to discuss. And Superintendent Olson will talk about that.
Yeah, each year, it is important for, it's necessary for a community to develop a polling place resolution in case there were a community or school board special election. So, both for the city and school district, in case there's ever a member who ends up ending a term in the middle of their term, we need to have, and we need to have a special election, we need to always designate that spot prior. So, this is a resolution that can be read tonight and signed by our clerk. And then, it'll be made available in case there is a need in our community.
It resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 882, State of Minnesota, as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A.11, the board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated by a county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school district special and general elections not held on the same day as a statewide election. Combined polling place, Monticello Community Center Gym, 505 Walnut Street, Monticello, Minnesota, 55362. This combined polling place serves all territory in Independent School District Number 882, located in Becker Township, Big Lake City, and Big Lake Township, Buffalo Township, Clearwater Township, Maple Lake Township, Monticello, Monticello Township, Atsigo, and Silver Creek Township, Allinray County, Minnesota.
Thank you. This is not an action item. It's simply an item that we have to present to the public, and this will be signed by our clerk, Melissa Curtis. So, moving on to item number 10, Safe and Healthy Culture. We're going to welcome Rob Daniker, our Director of Human Resources and also our Policy Committee Chair, to the podium to discuss policies 104, 524, 535, and 808.
Thank you, Chair Zieberth, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. And Chair Zieberth, you kind of introduced fairly, really well what I'm going to be here to talk about. So, we have four policies that are going to first read tonight. So, there's no action to be taken by the board on any of these tonight. The first one is Policy 104, which is a fairly fundamental policy when it comes to board dynamics. But the title is School District Mission Statement. Purpose of this policy is to establish clear statement of purpose for which the districts, the school districts exist. And so, the Policy Committee reviewed this one. We embedded our local mission statement into the draft policy. And so, that's for first read tonight. The second one on the list is Policy 524. This is our Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. The purpose of this policy is to set forth policies and guidelines for access to the school district computer system and acceptable and safe use of the Internet, including electronic communications. On this one, in addition to the MSBA draft policy, we did identify our local filtering preferences and added that to the policy. There is also a form, it is not on the agenda tonight, but there is a form that does go with this policy, and we'll make sure to add that form for the second read. Also, the Policy Committee had some questions regarding the use of that form, and so, we'll review that prior to second read as well. Third policy for first read tonight is Policy 535. This is currently, the numbered in our policies is 523. We are proposing to renumber it in alignment with MSBA model policy. And 535 or 523 currently has to do with service animals in schools. Purpose of this policy is to establish parameters for the use of service animals by students, employees, and visitors within school buildings and on school grounds. And the Policy Committee reviewed, there is a form for this one as well, I should mention. And the Policy Committee reviewed 535 along with 808, which is the next policy up for first read. And Policy 808 is animals on school premises. The purpose of this policy is to ensure the health and safety of students while enriching the school curriculum and student support with visits lessons regarding animals. And so, 535 is about service animals, 808 is about non-service animals. So, it was a good practice to review those in tandem. So, in, as a whole, we have four policies for first read tonight. 524, 535, and 808 all have forms attached with them. Any questions from the board regarding first read of those materials?
No questions.
All right. And then, for action tonight, we do have a second reading of Policy 709. 709 is the Student Transportation Safety Policy. The purpose of that policy is to provide safe transportation for students and to educate students on safety issues and the responsibilities of school bus ridership. This policy was reshaped significantly through some legislation that occurred recently. And so, we wanted to review this policy, make sure we were up to date with the appropriate materials. The Policy Committee did take a deeper dive into two aspects of 709. One was the transportation of pre-K students, which the district currently chooses to do. And then also, in terms of transportation of non-public school students, those students who are in non-public schools and/or charter schools. And so, we, the Policy Committee, from the first read to the second read, made some amendments on both of those areas, and so, bring it forward tonight for a second read and action on that.
Is there any discussion on Policy 709 from the board? So, we need to move this policy forward?
Second. I'm sorry, I'm making a motion.
Seconded.
Motion made by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Jamie Seben. All those in favor of approving Policy 709 as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six, zero. Thank you, Mr. Daniker. At this point, we are completed with our agenda, and we are going to make a motion to adjourn. And we will reconvene for a work session at 7:30. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
By Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. We are adjourned at 7:21. The board will reconvene for work session at 7:30. Thank you.